Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you and call our November 13 Fayetteville City Council meeting in order. Thank you, those who are joining us in the audience and those who are joining us by way of television or online. Tonight, we have the opportunity to show the true diversity and unity of this community we have. Typically, we have invocation and we rotate that process amongst different people in clergy and faith leaders. And tonight, we have representation from the Hindu temple. We have Mrs. Behikar, and pardon me if I mispronounce your name, Pastor Challenger from Greater Unity Tabernacle Christian Church, Rabbi Goldberg from the Beth Israel Congregation, Imam Adam Beyah from the Masjid Omar Said. So if they would please come to the podium, those names that I've called, and if you would render us a prayer for just a moment, starting with Ms. Behikar from the Hindu temple. And ask that all would please stand for the invocations immediately following the last invocation by Imam Beyah, if we could repeat the Pledge of Leanness. And good evening, you all. Thank you for joining us.
So thank you, everyone, for having us. My name is Paul Patel, my wife, Dr. Martha Bahiker. As we begin this evening's meeting, ladies and gentlemen, our esteemed mayor and respected council members, as we gather today to deliberate on matters of importance for our community, let us take a moment to reflect and seek guidance. Tonight, we seek wisdom for our leadership to make decisions that are just and fair, courage to uphold the greater good, and compassion to understand the needs of every individual in our city. As we light the lamp of this meeting, may our discussions be constructive and our resolutions be beneficial for all. May this gathering be guided by the principles of mutual respect, collaboration, and a shared vision for a brighter future for our city. And thank you for our leadership, for your dedication.
Thank you, Ms. Patel.
Thank you.
Thank you. This time, Pastor Challenger from the Greater Unity Tabernacle Christian Church. Good evening, Pastor.
Well, I thank God for another opportunity to come out tonight. I wanted to ask if I could tell a little bit about who I am before I pray, because it's a lot easier to pray for somebody when you know who's praying for you.
Amen.
And so I want to take this time to tell you that I am Dr. Cordelia Challenger, Apostle and Pastor of Greater Unity Tabernacle Christian Church. I retired from Fayetteville School System. I run a ministry that has about three nonprofit outreach ministries. We fed during the pandemic over 3,000 people per month, 3,000 meals per month. We now do about 200 to 300 meals per month. We clothed, we take time to go out into the community to work with the people. I am now getting home from delivering some young men who are second chancers to work where I help them get jobs and I transport them. And they're called the Widow's Might Second Chancers, and we have the Widow's Might Outreach. And just to let you know just a little bit before I pray and thank God for another opportunity. And congratulations, Mayor, and God bless each one of you that are here tonight. Most holy and precious Father, we come tonight to say thank you. Father, and if we've fallen short in any way, we ask that you forgive us. For, Lord, we need your guidance, we need your protection, we need your mercy. So, Lord, we ask you to give us the knowledge, wisdom, understanding, to be able to accomplish everything that you would have us to accomplish. God, we thank you for unity, because where there's unity, there's strength. A house divided cannot stand. God, so we come together touching and agreeing, and we know that anything we ask in your name, that you will do it for us. So tonight, we stand together in unity, asking you for the strength to do the things that we must do, say the things that we must say, the hard things, the easy things, the things that we see, the things that we don't see. God, we want you to see it for us. Let us see with our hearts and not our eyes. Let us feel with our eyes and not our mouth. So, God, let us touch where there's no hatred, no crime, and evilness. God, we know that it's there, but help us, Lord, that we will note it, but yet fight it with love. God, we thank you and we praise you for this opportunity, God. We ask you bless every councilman, bless every person on the council, strengthen them, guide them, direct them, cover them under the blood of Jesus. These and all of the blessings we ask in Jesus' name, and amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. At this time, if we could have Rabbi Goldberg. Okay, Imam Adam Beyah.
I just want to say good evening to Mayor, the City Council members, and good evening to the prestigious men and women behind me who are citizens of Fayetteville, because I think now in this day, we all are needed and all have to answer the call. I want to just open up with a couple of things before I give the Ask for a Prayer. And one is, if I might... Excuse me. One of the statements that was attributed to our Prophet Muhammad, Prophet of 1,400 years ago, whom the Quran was revealed. Prophet said that he saw in a vision the followers of Moses, the followers of Christ Jesus, and the followers, his followers, in heaven and paradise. With that, I give you this reading from the Book of All Muslims, which numbers about 1 billion worldwide. In the first, I'll read it in Arabic and then English translations. "Othamahimishetoninregime" In that translation, it's those who believe in the Quran, those who follow the Jewish scriptures and the savings and the Christians, "any who believe in God in last day and work righteousness, on them shall be no fear, nor shall they grieve." And then another part of the Quran that I wanted to read that I think is appropriate. And in this part, it's the 20th, no, the ninth chapter, 13th verse. In that translation, it says, "Oh mankind, we created you from a single pair, from a male and a female, and made you into nations and tribes that you may know each other, not that you may despise each other. Verily, the most honorable of you in the sight of God is he who is the most righteous of you, and God has full knowledge and is well acquainted with all things." And lastly, the Prophet mentioned in his final address, he said, "There is no superiority of a black over a white, or a white over a black, or a nationalist over another nationalist, or an Arab, or any other nation." He said, "The only criteria is consciousness in regard for this." So with that, we'd like to just say a prayer. With God's name, the merciful benefactor, the merciful redeemer, we praise God who is one who created every human being and everything in creation. We ask God to bless the City Council and the commissioners and everybody who has authority over us, given authority through our governmental requirements, to always seek the best course, the best way. And we ask that all of our citizens, citizenry, and especially those of faith, to seek the best in our faith, to offer the society the best in our faith, to show the society of people working in unison, not disrespecting any, but respecting the positions of all, so that the average citizen will see, based on our actions, that goodness is on the rise. Amen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you. Thank you to Mr. Patel, Ms. Behikar, Pastor Challenger, and to all who participated tonight. Tonight was a little bit different, and I appreciate your patience, councilman, and those who are joining us. Over the weekend, we saw a couple of things that we know are not representative of our community. There are a couple of faith institutions that were vandalized. There were a couple who had received, one had received bomb threats. And we just wanted to show that our community is unified regardless and in spite of that different races and creeds and colors and religions make the melting pot that makes our city great. And so I thank you all for that and for your patience for allowing us to just get a glimpse at what it is and who it is that we call our brothers and our sisters in our community and the things that they believe. And so thank you for enduring during that time. And thank you all for coming. Pastor Challenger, you and your team continue to work. That was one of the institutions that were unfortunately vandalized. And we're asking any of our citizens who know anything, hear anything, please say something. You have the ability to text it. Text 911. It's an anonymous communication, but it may mean the world a difference. So we ask that you would do that, just to help us keep our community on the right path. So with that, we'll move to a special announcement. I'll go to Councilmember Courtney Banks-McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mayor. We have Girl Scout Troop 1804 in the audience. I wanted to recognize them. We have a P, well, they have a PSA that will be showing just here shortly. But I did want to recognize Andrea Vaughn, Arianna Brooks, Bianca Crawford, and Emily Smallwood. If you could stand for a second so everyone can see you. And with, and the PSA they created, it's unfortunate our youth saw the need to advocate against gun violence, so they put a PSA together. And I wanted the, for them to present it in front of the council and as well as our viewing audience, so they can see how detrimental gun violence has impacted our community. And then afterwards, I'll be recognizing them with an award.
Good evening, ladies. How you doing?
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Monica Crawford. I'm troop co-leader for Troop 1804 from Lewis Chapel Missionary Baptist Church with the Girl Scouts North Carolina Coastal Pines Council.
Good evening, everyone. I am Arianna Brooks, and I am a ninth grader, and I am a private schooler. Yeah.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Bianca Crawford, and I'm an eighth grader at Ree Ross Classical School.
Good evening. I am Andrea Vaughn, and I am a ninth grader at Jack Britt High School. And we're wearing the color orange for teen gun violence prevention.
All right.
Good evening. I'm Emily Smallwood, and I'm an eighth grader at 71st Classical Middle School.
We are, we are the 2023 Silverware Cadets from Girl Scout Troop 1804 from Lewis Chapel Missionary Baptist Church.
Excuse me. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, Fayetteville City Council, for inviting the Silverware Cadets of Troop 1804 to your council meeting. We are honored and excited to present our Girl Scout Silverware Project to the Fayetteville City Council and Fayetteville leadership. The Girl Scouts Silverware is the highest award a cadet can earn. It requires that we develop and complete
It requires that we develop and complete a take action project that will address a local, state, or national issue facing our society today. It must also be a sustainable project that will help make the world a better place.
We, we chose to do our project on teen gun violence prevention. This issue is very close to us. Last year, former troop member from daughter of city councilwoman Courtney Banks McLaughlin, Coryanna Young, was killed during a teen gun violence incident. This made us want to bring awareness to the issue.
We spent many hours creating, designing, and developing a display, a brochure, and a public service announcement video addressing teen gun violence prevention. We designed and dedicated Teens with Wings Memorial Garden for families whose lives have been touched by teen gun violence at Lewis Chapel Missionary Baptist Church. Here is our public service announcement addressing the teen gun violence prevention.
Did you know?
Have you ever thought about it?
What are you going to do about it?
Have you heard that tragically teens are dying every day from gun violence? This needs to stop.
Did you know that each year nineteen thousand children and teens are shot and killed or wounded, and approximately three million are exposed to gun violence? This needs to stop.
What are your thoughts about the fact that black children and teens are seventeen times more likely than white children and teens by the same age that by gun homicide? This needs to stop.
What are you going to do about it? Well, you could join me and my fellow cadet Girl Scouts in troop eighteen oh four as we launch a public awareness campaign addressing the need to stop teen gun violence. For our Silverware project, we are bringing attention to this terrible crisis in hopes of opening up dialogue to find solutions for prevention.
So help us, spread the word. Tell your friends, tell your family, and tell your elected officials.
From city council and county commissioners to state legislators and the governor, all the way up to the U.S. Congress and the president, it's time we all do our part to stop teen gun violence. Because enough is enough.
Good job, ladies. Good job. Beautiful.
This one's special. This is one of my daisies right here. So she's, she's special to me. Well, you all are, but yeah. Andrea. You guys want to sign this one and take a picture? Whatever is easier. Moving on, spin around.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Banks-McLaughlin. And thank you, ladies, for your great work in the community and helping us get the word out about the importance of, uh, gun violence prevention. So thank you so much. Uh, with that, I'll move to councilmember Dawkins for an announcement, then Jensen. Then we'll move to the recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to, um, wish my son, Johnny Lee Dawkins the Fourth, a very happy thirty-seventh birthday. Uh, he is with his wife in Boston, Sarah Dawkins, who is presenting to the National Liver Transplant Conference. Um, big deal. And, uh, she, uh, works at Duke. She is the lead, uh, nurse practitioner for the liver transplant team. Uh, they do about six to seven transplants per week. Hopefully, you'll never need them. Uh, but just wanted to wish him a happy birthday and to wish Sarah good luck in the morning when she makes her presentation to about twenty-five hundred doctors. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Patel. Uh, councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just want to make a quick announcement that it is spaghetti dinner time again for Saint Constantine in Helen Greek Orthodox Church. Um, that will be on Wednesday, November fifteenth, and it will be from ten AM to eight PM at six fourteen Oak Ridge Avenue. So, um, if I'm not mistaken, I think it's the sixty-fourth year. So it's the world's largest spaghetti dinner, so we hope to see everyone here. And thank you to everybody that supports our community.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't want to be remiss without wishing our dean, our dean of council, my man, Mr. DJ Hair, a happy birthday tomorrow. So let's give it up for him, y'all. Thank you so much.
Are you going on a hundred, D? Alright. Alright, thank you for that. Uh, as we move to recognitions, now I'll go to councilmember Benevente and Mr. Pavel Patel and Ms. Bahakar if they could meet councilmember Benevente at the podium. Alright, I have a proclamation prepared from Officer of the Mayor and on behalf of the city council. And it reads as follows, "Whereas more than one billion celebrants worldwide reverently observe the holy day of Diwali to mark the beginning of the Hindu New Year, whereas Diwali, the festival of light, symbolizes the victory of light over darkness, good over evil, and knowledge over ignorance, and is one of the most celebrated festivals of Hindus, Sikhs, Janes, and newer Buddhists. And whereas Diwali is a time for Dana, charitable giving, and Sava, selfless service by bringing light in the form of wisdom, knowledge, nourishment, and shelter in order to alleviate the tangible forms of suffering such as hunger, disease, and poverty. Whereas the shared Indian holiday of Diwali signifies a special time of peace and serenity with the hope of building bridges of understanding and tearing down barriers of intolerance. Whereas with respect and compassion, the city of Fayetteville will embrace diversity and will continue to celebrate our different cultures. Now therefore, I am Mitch Colvin, mayor of the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina, on behalf of the city council and more than two hundred and eight thousand citizens, to hereby honorably proclaim the twelfth day of November of twenty twenty-three in honor of the festival of Diwali. God bless." Congratulations again.
Thank you. I just want to speak a few words about Diwali. Diwali, the word is derived from Sanskrit. The original word is dipavali, which means the row of lights, and hence the name Diwali, also called as Festival of Lights. In the spirit of Diwali, we are reminded of the triumph of light over darkness, knowledge over ignorance, hope over despair. May the luminance essence of this festival inspire us to illuminate the path ahead of with wisdom, compassion, and foresight. May the lights of Diwali encourage us to nurture the flames of harmony and goodwill and celebrate the unity in our diverse community. Let these lights remind us that our collective efforts can conquer challenges and lead our city towards progress and prosperity. Thank you so much, all of you, to give us this opportunity. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Patel, here's, here's the servant, our Millennium Commissioner. Alright, well, good to see you guys again. Okay, very active. Alright, so before I go to, uh, councilmember Ingram, councilmember Banks-McLaughlin throw in, uh, an announcement. Oh, yeah, yeah. You gotta talk about that. Alright, councilmember Banks-McLaughlin.
Thank you, um, mayor. Um, I just wanted to let, um, the residents know who are not aware. Um, we have our first express bus route, um, which, um, meets at Tubel Lane. And from Tubel Lane goes to Hoak Loop Road and to Cross Creek Mall. That's, this is our first express route, so I hope you all take advantage of, um, this service so that we connect, um, West Fayetteville to other areas to the city. And the bus, um, times are from six AM to ten AM and from three to, what was it, three to six PM. It's every hour on our hour. And if you need more information, you can go onto the city of Fayetteville website. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Alright, moving to councilmember Ingram and ask the members, uh, Mr. Q Derek and members of Tulsa Initiative if they would come to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so, uh, thank you for the Tulsa Initiative for coming up. The city, uh, partnered with them and supported them in an initiative that they did, um, which was the Keys to, Keys to Success Male Resource Event. And, um, they are here to talk about impacts of that and share, um, about a program that is within Tulsa Initiative. And it's good to see you, Dr. Heath of the Matriculation Institute. Thank you for the full assurance.
Alright, well, good evening, everyone. We're super excited to be here. Um, I'm gonna do this in twofold. First of all, we want to talk about the, uh, male mixer resource. Uh, I have Dr. Heath here with me, the Assistant Vice Chancellor and Dean of Students at Fayetteville State University. Um, and before we show you guys the recap video, one of the things that we have been working, Dr. Heath and I, uh, with the Male Matriculation Institute at Fayetteville State in Tulsa is how do we get young men involved, um, but not just involved, how do we connect them to the resources? Um, as you guys know my story, I was charged as a juvenile with non-felony charges right here in the city of Fayetteville. And so it has a very special place on my heart. Um, and so we were able to do that. Uh, I'm not gonna steal all the thunder. I'm gonna let Dr. Heath, uh, say some words, but we were able to partner with Cumberland County Schools as well as fifty local community partners right here in the city of Fayetteville for over three hundred and fifty young males to come to Fayetteville State where we had speakers. And the amazing thing about this, well, we were able to have some real conversations. Many of those young men after that conversation, uh, was able to get onsite admissions into Methodist Fayetteville Tech, Fayetteville State, as well as we had some young men that served, that signed up to serve, um, in our nation, um, armed forces, as well as we connected them to local nonprofits. And so it was super exciting. I'm gonna pass to Dr. Heath, and then we're gonna play the video, and then I'm gonna introduce the Tulsa guys.
Uh, good afternoon, everybody. Um, I just want to say, uh, the partnership with the Tulsa Initiative just started out of conversation. Um, if you know the history of Fayetteville State, it started with a hundred and thirty-six dollars, right? And so there's a time where HBCU was the educational church for the community. And I've been at Fayetteville State since last December. And my goal is to create a space for these young men and young ladies to have a home. Even if they don't decide to go to Fayetteville State, at least we expose them to higher education. Let them know that no matter where you come from, no matter your, no matter your circumstance, if you put your head to it and your heart to it, you can get to that level. And so that's all we're trying to bring. And here at Fayetteville State, um, we just want to know that the doors are open and the opportunity is there. So, thank you.
Do not allow anyone to define your future. I want you guys to repeat this for me. Do not let anyone define your future. Do not, say it again. Do not let anyone define your future. In this life, if you're not aiming towards where you think you're headed, you will never get there. You will only advance towards your strongest dream, your strongest thought. You will only head in the direction of your strongest thought. If you say you know, so I want you to write this down. If you don't obsess over your dream, you will never achieve it. The only things that we achieve in this life are the things that we obsess over, the things that we think about night and day, the things that we wake up dreaming about, the things we go to bed thinking about, the things that we desire to do more than anything else. If that does not drain this into your life, you settle for being good. Good is always hidden in being great. No one remembers good. You only remember those that are great. We don't remember Michael Jordan because he was good. We remember Michael Jordan because he was great.
I want you to share some wisdom from that experience of watching someone that we love get shot in the head and die.
You don't have to be a product of the environment. You can be damaged and not be destroyed. And so, uh, that's what I learned from that. I was damaged, but I wasn't destroyed. I was going to become better than God.
What is so tangible, and these three tangible beings, that you can give these young men that they should be looking to do when they leave from here?
Y'all was a family. Y'all can do anything, bro. Like, anything, community. If you keep the fact in mind, like I told you, number one, you're from the village, you can do it. Like, people have done whatever y'all are trying to do. I promise you. It is done. Two, you have that skill set. You're ready to compete with whoever, because you've developed a skill set and that last beat having that belief in yourself, you're gonna accomplish anything, right?
In this audience, I see mayors and governors and presidents, or whatever it is you want to be. Anything you want to do, regardless of what it is that you determine to do, make sure that distractions are not the impediment between you and your ultimate goal.
So we just wanted to say thank you to the city of Fayetteville. Thank you to the city manager, to Chris Colley, and all of you all for coming out, supporting, and making that event happen. Like I said, I think it was a very, um, it was a heavy push. It was a heavy push to see that many young men in the room where we literally had to cut off the questions because there were so many questions that were coming in. Um, and one of the questions that one of the young men asked, he stood up and asked, he said, "How do I break the cycle?" And so we know that these types of conversations are needed, and we're super thankful for having our partners and partners with Dr. Heath, the city of Fayetteville, Fayetteville PD, and everybody that makes this possible. So, real quick, I'm shifting. Let the young men introduce themselves. Uh, these young men are part of our Tulsa Leadership and Entrepreneurship Academy. Uh, we had over eighty applicants. We were only able to take fifteen. And these young men all own businesses, and they are between the ages of eighteen to twenty-five. And so I'm gonna let them introduce themselves real quick, thirty seconds, and we out y'all way.
Hello, everyone. Um, I thank you once again for having us come up here on the behalf of Tulsa Initiative. Um, my name is Intel McCoy. I am the CEO and host of Campus Deep Dive, the TV show that would change what the definition of entertainment is. So Campus Deep Dive is a digital, digital interview style TV talk show that is not only entertainment but informative, where we take a deep dive into the background successes and failures, and also background stories of university students, faculty, and staff with the purpose in mind to build a greater community and also growth-minded culture, something that I didn't have growing up. So we, we get very inquisitive on there, and it's a, it's a good watch. So thank you for listening once again.
Good evening. I am Tajron Adams, founder and CEO of Sud School. Uh, what do you think when you think of innovative or disruptive businesses? Is Uber, Netflix, maybe even Tulsa comes to mind? But starting today, I want you to remember to add Sud School to that list because Sud School is an innovative approach for students that's going to revolutionize how students do their laundry on campuses, as well as, um, cultivate time management skills and time management apps within a reach for students. What we do is we allow students to drop their clothes off at assigned communal locations where we then have it picked up, washed, dried, and folded by our professionals by, at Sud School. We then deliver it back to the students the next day, so that way they can eliminate the task and the chores of doing their laundry. And also it aligns with Fayetteville's Economic Development Plan for twenty twenty-four, bringing more jobs to the city of Fayetteville and giving opportunities for individuals so that they can make money and make ways for their families to survive. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Uh, my name is Justin Pruitt. I'm a nineteen-year-old student and entrepreneur. I'm also a holistic and spiritual practitioner. Uh, my business, I'm the CEO of The Juice Products. So The Juice Products is a holistic, um, body product brand that I created. So it's not only just for, um, for your body, but it's also for healing the community as well. So I specialize in creating chemical-free products, because a lot of times we know that's what- because a lot of times we know that's what is a big issue in what we have nowadays. But also, I'm expecting my brand to creating holistic health centers across the nation and franchising it to become bigger. I've been able to get my product in three different stores, and I've continued to leverage it to different places. So, my purpose behind it, though, is because your passion serves you and your purpose serves others. So, I'm really following my purpose and walking in what my purpose is supposed to be. So, I thank you for listening, and that's what I do. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am David Spikes, and I am the CEO of Limelight Productions, where we put your story center stage. So, if I ask everybody in here to turn their life story into a book right now, how well do you think that book would sell? Everybody has an important story. That's what brought us, our story is what brought us all here today. But how do you go about telling your story in a way that moves people? This is what Limelight Productions aims to do. Limelight Productions is a client-centric media production company with a mission to provide bipolar organizations, entrepreneurs, and small businesses with a product that captures their vision, their mission, and their story. Through a mixture of photography, videography, graphic design, and video editing, we aim to give you a product that puts your story center stage. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, so much for allowing us to come.
Mr. Covington, quick question. How about, how many students were you able to touch on that day?
Yeah, so we had over 350.
Wow, thank you. Thank you for your work.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you to the city. Thank you, guys.
Councilmember Banks, we gotta move on. Real quick, real quick.
Question. Before you guys leave, can you guys provide your information for those who want to come on and support you?
I can send it to y'all real quick.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Q. Derrick. Thank you, Tulsa Initiative. Real proud of you guys. Keep up the good work. All right, council, moving on to city manager's report. Mr. Hewitt.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, good evening. As I always say, please, if you have not done so, please sign up online for the city manager's report. It is an excellent opportunity in a way that we use to share great information, such as you've heard tonight, as well as to let you know about upcoming events. Building off of the earlier announcements and invocation that we did, Mayor, members of council, some of the issues that the mayor talked about that are happening globally, nationally, some of them are also happening locally as well. And we're really blessed in this community to have, to have an entity that supports, builds, teaches, and reaches so many people in our community. They have, and we're one of few, a few North Carolina communities actually have a Human Relations Commission. And then with the remaining portion of my time, I'd like to ask our director, Yamil Nazar, to come forward briefly and to share with the council again and the community what all that the Human Relations Commission does continually and can do to help us build greater community unity. In under three minutes, if we can. Ms. Nazar is being assisted as well. As you can see, she had a slight accident, but she's a real trooper, and nothing can stop her from talking about issues of importance to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. Good evening, Mayor, city council members. I'm a New Yorker, so I'm gonna speak fast, and I will definitely keep it under three minutes. I want you all to know that the Human Relations Commission and the Human Relations Department is committed to always see and promote more quality in our community, equity. But one of the things that we like to focus on is building awareness. Sometimes when we have incidents like the ones that we've had recently, which saddened me, because I really want to work myself out of a job, it is usually the fact that there is a lack of awareness. One of the things that we say is that you cannot hate the person that you know. You cannot hate the person's story. So, one of the things we do through community engagement is that we provide opportunities and safe places to have conversations that people would otherwise not have. One of those initiatives that we have is called Dining and Dialogue. The last two that we've had is, one of them was Meet Your Muslim Neighbor. We brought in about 10 leaders from the Muslim community, and we had small group discussions in hopes of building awareness around some things that we know and some things that we think we know. The last one we had, as it relates to Dining and Dialogue, was providing attendees with an opportunity to have lunch, either visually impaired or blind, in hopes of building an awareness around the obstacles, barriers, and challenges that our persons in those communities face. As you know, back in 2021, this council gave the Market House project to my department and my commission, and we continue to work diligently in hopes that we create a product that will hopefully give people more insight as to not just the bad and the ugly. There are a lot of things that we did wrong in this country in our past. We can't change it, but we can definitely look into the future and try to make it better. So, we have been here since the late '60s, and we intend to be here throughout the future. If any of you have any needs from us, by all means, call the office, and we will always be more than happy to assist in building a community that we all can be proud of.
And we hope you get better soon.
Thanks.
All right. All right, Mr. Hewitt, is that? All right, thank you so much, Ms. Yamil, and the Human Relations Commission. All right, council, moving forward to the approval of the agenda. Councilmember here.
Yes, sir, Mayor. What I wanted to ask a question before I went there. 10-01 administrative report, is that going to be spoken on?
Or was that a part of? Goes to a work session if you choose.
Sir?
Goes to a work session if you choose under administrative reports.
Okay, because I just wanted it to be spoken on and so that the public could be aware of what was doing in that report. That's the reason I asked.
Yeah, but typically the administrator wants to go to a full meeting so that we can get it to the details.
I would like to make that motion that it does.
All right.
That it moves to a work session or full meeting.
Okay.
Just to make it public to our, to our public.
So, council, as we move to the approval of the agenda, Councilmember here, did you have an item?
Yes, sir. Mayor, I would like to make a request that please add, I guess, to 10-02.
9.02. 9.02.
Okay, okay. Then to move to 9.02, a cease demo of 501, I mean, 5007 Collin Street in the Bonny Doon subdivision for discussion tonight, an opportunity to continue to give the property owners the opportunity to take this structure from the demo list off a bike list to improve our co-housing.
So, the motion, if I hear you right, Councilmember here, is to, in addition to approving the agenda, you would like to add an item, which is 9.02, for discussion tonight, which is the reconsideration for the demolition for the property address.
Yes, for 5007 Collin Street, which is presently on our 2022 demo list.
All right, so it's a motion on the floor to approve the agenda with the addition as stated to 9.02. Is there a second? You had a question? You had a question, Councilmember just? Ingram? That's what, that's what it is doing.
We heard what the item was. So, typically, we don't hear what the item is. We have to have the super majority.
Well, it's got a.
However.
Yeah, so 9.02 had to have a title, which is, as far as we can take it, until the council approves or disapproves the motion. All right, so it's a motion by Councilmember here, seconded by Councilmember Thompson, to approve the agenda with the addition of 9.02 as mentioned. All right, council?
And we need super majority.
You're talking about the address?
Please force the address. I've received two addresses. I have an address from the city that says 5007. So, I. Okay. Whichever, whatever the correct address is. But I was just going on the letter that was sent to them from the city, and that's the address that it had.
So, the Collin Street demolition is what will be discussed.
5002 Collin Street.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Yep, so it needs at least eight super majorities, since we are amending the agenda onsite. All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. All right. Motion carries to approve the agenda with that item. Voting opposition. Councilmember Mahendros. All right, moving to the consent items. Council, entertain a motion for consent. All right, it's a motion by Councilmember Ingram, seconded by Councilmember Thompson to approve the consent. Discussion on the motion. And council, after this, we'll try to go back to our sure system. All right. Council, I'll look to you for your action on this item for consent. We're missing one. Oh, all right. All right, so motion carries 9-1. Those voting opposition. Mr. Hewitt, you're voting in opposition?
I'm not quite sure.
Motion carries. All right. Council, as we move to the public forum. All right. Council, move. This is a, this is a time that any Fayetteville resident may have input and a voice in what goes on in their city. Due to policy restrictions, the forum will not last any longer than 30 minutes, and each speaker will be limited to three minutes each to address the city council issues related to the city. Individuals designed to speak at tonight's public forum should have signed up with the city clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. If you're here to speak on an item that may be on tonight's public hearing, we ask that you please reserve those comments to the public hearing. So, when your name is called by the city clerk, please come to the podium clearly, state your name and address for the record. You'll be notified that you have three minutes to speak. At 30 seconds, you'll be notified that you have 30 seconds remaining. And at the end of your allotted time, the time will expire. Again, the policy restrictions unable to extend the given time. And with that being said, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we have 15 speakers. Our first speaker is Ms. Vivian Boito. Ms. Vivian Boito, not present. Our next speaker is Mr. Van Julius Hairston. Van Julius Hairston, not present. Mr. Archie Behringer.
Good evening, Reverend Behringer.
Good evening. I'm Chaplain Archie Behringer, and Mr. Mayor and members of city council. I come before you tonight humbly requesting the slogans around the Market House to be removed. They have served their purpose. They've run their course. I think that everyone has gotten the message. They represent a sad era in our city's history. But it is now a new day, and we need a new move on with words that we can all agree with. We need to move on with words like love, unity, harmony, and respect for each other. My friends, we are an all-American city, which means that we should be an example to other cities and be inclusive of all people. We host an annual international festival with people participating from all races, colors, and creeds. God is no respecter of persons. In Him, there is no Jew, there is no Greek, there is no Gentile, there is no black, and there is no white. God sees us all the same. We should do that also. We're a city of history, heroes, and a hometown feeling. History, yes. Heroes, for sure. A hometown feeling, well, I'm not so sure about that anymore. There is a song made popular during the Civil Rights Movement, "We Shall Overcome." Well, yes, we shall overcome, but it will be by working together. There's an old saying that no turtle sits atop a fence post having gotten there by himself. He's had some help. My friends, we must all be proactive against prejudice, and we must all work together to eradicate the evil and the inequality that exists between white people and black people. And let us do so by removing those divisive slogans that bring to mind discrimination every time I go around that Market House. They remind me of discrimination and detracts from our diversity. Mr. Mayor, Fayetteville is fractured. Let the healing now begin. I'm looking for more in 2024. I hope that you are too. United, we stand; divided, we fall. We are stronger together. Mr. Mayor, if you can agree with these concepts of what I have said here this evening in this brief period of time, I would like to come forward, shake your hand, and let us agree to begin to work together for change in 2024. May I?
Well, pass it. That's not the way that it typically works here, but I'll step over there and definitely shake your hand. Yes, sir. I'll meet you over there in just a second.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Our next speaker is Mr. Floyd Wicker. Mr. Floyd Wicker, not present. Our next speaker is Mr. Brian Mello.
How y'all doing tonight?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm Brian Mello, and I'm actually here to advocate for the homeless. And I'm gonna put it like this, actually. There's two types of homeless, the ones that don't want the help and the ones that are actually trying to do what they can to get off the streets and do what's necessary, get a job and everything. And for y'all to look at all the homeless as one, as the problem, try to arrest them when they have nowhere to go, have all this stuff in place because of the people that are actually hindering the ones that are trying to do better to better their lives, that's wrong. Can I see a show of hands of who actually showed up to the DRC, the Day Resource Center?
Go, this is your three minutes, sir. Go ahead and make your statement. Yes, sir.
I wanna see, can I get a show of hands from all of y'all that are here on the city council and the mayor who showed up to the Day Resource Center during operational hours?
Oh, I've been there.
Only two during operational hours.
That's right.
Since September eleventh, when I called, when I said that none of y'all showed y'all face. Two have. Ms. Ingram and one other one. And they've actually talked to the people. And they know there's two different types of homeless, the ones that stay in the Day Resource Center all day, not looking for a job, sleeping, doing whatever they want, and the ones that actually go in there to get the help that they need. If this is America's can-do city, y'all not doing what y'all can. And y'all should be appalled at yourself for not showing your faces and actually being the governing body and actually doing what y'all can, cuz y'all not.
Sir, make your comments, but don't make it personal.
That's all I have.
All right, well, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Ann Schrader.
Good evening, Ms. Schrader.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Colvin, city council, and city managers. My name's Ann Schrader, and I'm a longstanding resident, environmentalist, entrepreneur, and I'm the founder and owner of Eco Solutions, a local chamber member sustainability consultancy founded to address our environmental and climate crises. And why is this so important? And why should we care? And why have I been sounding the alarm about these challenges for so many years? First, through direct experience. After decades-long personal and family businesses were impacted by environmental fire and flood disasters. And second, because global research, science shows us that we are contributing to our natural resource depletion, pollution, and environmental challenges knowingly or unknowingly through our daily behaviors, policies, and practices. And with greater awareness of the causes of many of these challenges, we're more empowered to help implement sustainable solutions. As you know, I've been bringing attention to the need for an update to our city's 2009 Sustainability Master Plan. In addition to this awareness, I've personally met with many of you, as well as other community leaders, other policymakers, legislatures, and stakeholders about this plan. And I've demonstrated and I've submitted my qualifications to be of service to this city. We also have a distinct opportunity coming up to incorporate sustainability and climate action initiatives in our upcoming 2024, 2025 City of Fayetteville Strategic Plan that would address the need for community education and engagement, waste and resource reduction and recycling solutions, reductions in greenhouse gas emissions through energy-efficient buildings and cleaner transportation, water conservation and protection of our Cape Fear River water resource, and the provision of available and equitable housing. So in closing, our environmental and climate crisis is truly unprecedented. It's undeniable, and it's really the defining challenge of our time. And our calls for unified action and leadership are now. Never before have we had more funding available to address these challenges. And so money, so many of their solutions are fundamental, free, and they're scaling all over the world. We just need greater awareness. We need greater prioritization and the unified leadership to implement these sustainable solutions. I love our city motto that says, "We found a way." I tweaked a little bit, "We found a way." We care for each other, we protect the world and our environment, and we always go further.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and your attention, and I welcome your collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Madam? Yeah, you can give that to the clerk, Ms. Schrader. Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir, our next speaker is Mr. Robert Walls. Mr. Robert Walls? Not present? Our next speaker is Ms. Brenda Greiner. Brenda Greiner? Our next speaker is Ms. Sharon Moyer.
Good evening, Ms. Moyer, how are you?
I'm doing pretty good, how are you?
Good.
Uh, my name is Sharon Moyer, I live in District Two in beautiful Haymont. Good evening, council members, Mayor Protem Dawkins and Mayor Mitch Colvin. Thank you very much for your public service. Right now, I am disabled with a visual impairment that has rendered me unable to drive. Rather than constantly depending on others, I am exercising my independence by taking our city bus. I have found our bus system to be excellent, always on time, clean, and very friendly drivers. While riding the bus has been a great experience, navigating, navigating street crossings has not. You all know the issues we have with insufficient sidewalks, but in my experience, we have a bigger issue with insufficient crosswalks. Each Monday morning, I have a medical appointment at Crosspoint Center. I take bus fourteen from my neighborhood to the mall and have to cross Morganton Road. There are no crosswalks between Cross Creek Mall at Glensford or the entrance of Crosspoint Center. I also take the bus to work, and I get off at Sycamore Dairy and Bargain Street. There is no crosswalk at that intersection either. But my scariest experience has been crossing Morganton Road at Westwood Shopping Center. There are no crosswalks at any intersections there at Westwood Shopping Center, at Sycamore Dairy and Morganton, at Morganton and McPherson, or even McPherson Church Road going into McPherson Square where I go to my yoga class. As you know, as you all know, we, the voters, pass both public safety and public infrastructure bonds totaling eighty-five million dollars between the two. I know crime and gun violence is top of everyone's mind, and I'm no stranger to hearing gunshots in my neighborhood. In fact, on July eighteenth, two thousand sixteen, there was a gun battle in front of my house and a bullet hit my home. However, even with that, I am far more afraid of being hit by a car while trying to cross the road. Crosswalks are part of public safety. On this morning's bus ride, I spoke to a woman whose brother was recently hit while trying to cross the road after he got off the bus. He's currently in Duke, and they're not sure he's gonna make it. Each day I ride the bus, I see an average of thirty different people, adults going to work, kids going to high school, families going to the grocery store. I'm here to ask you to use some of that bond funds to make our city safer and paint crosswalks at every major intersection and every intersection where a bus stops. We're just trying to live our lives. Um, also, I want to remind everyone here tonight and watching at home to get your annual eye exam and make sure your eye exam includes retinal imaging. It may be an extra cost, but it is worth it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Joseph Wheeler.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, ma'am, good evening, city council. So this evening, I'm here to speak on an initiative that has been put up for discussion about paying members of the COC as a director. I don't think that's a great idea. That's not a great idea for the unhoused community because we have several paid director positions now that aren't doing the jobs they're supposed to do. Services are not being provided. People are not being receptive of things that are in place for them to have, housing being the main thing. In the last two weeks, the city manager's office has done a clearing of downtown in front of the library. Not only were they clearing and throwing away personal possessions of people, but they were also clearing and throwing away lives. I almost lost a friend who attempted to commit suicide over the city's decision to clear the downtown area of Fayetteville. I put him in the ambulance personally, myself. I reached out to Marius Maximus, who is the peer support counseling group at the Day Resource Center to follow up. To the best of my knowledge, they have not followed up. I don't know, I know he's out of the hospital, I know he's not in Fayetteville anymore. I hope he didn't continue the job and kill himself. But hiring, my point is hiring someone, a professional paid director for the COC is not gonna fix the problems that we have with the unhoused community in this city. Thank you for your time.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Tracy Smith.
Good evening, Ms. Smith, everyone. Good evening.
Tracy Smith, nine forty, Henne Creek Drive, Fayetteville, North Carolina. Good evening. My nephew Lorenzo Irvin died of fentanyl poisoning. Lorenzo had enough fentanyl in his system and killed twelve to thirteen people. His body was dumped on Murkison Road, eleven, twenty-three, twenty-two. A bystander called nine-one-one. My sister had informed Fayetteville Police Department that morning that her son was missing and her car was stolen. My sister had been trying to get in, in touch with Lorenzo throughout the night, was unable to, was unsuccessful. My sister was notified of Lorenzo's death by someone from Facebook who had called my sister and said, "I'm sorry, ma'am, but that's your son's body." Before my sister had received that call, she had posted a message on Facebook, shared a picture of my nephew, her son Lorenzo, a picture of her car. Fayetteville Police Detective Ashley Woodford never interviewed my sister. My sister's car was found twenty-two days later, within four minutes of Lorenzo's body, at Road Runner, which is located off Rose Hill, Rose Hill Road. Lorenzo's items were stolen, his cellphone, his jacket, Cash App card. The evidence that I, I provided to Fayetteville Police Department Detective Asher could clearly say that he was deceased. While he was deceased, these individuals tried to order pizzas with his Cash App card. Throughout the months, they kept saying, "Well, we're waiting on autopsy, we're waiting on autopsy." As you're waiting on autopsy, there's were crimes that were committed. I, per my sister's request, there was a meeting, one of the meetings back in March. Sergeant Locklear, when I asked why no one is prosecuting these cases, death by distribution, he stated the district attorney, Billy West, will not prosecute anyone, death by distribution, death by distribution cases. I asked him why. He couldn't answer. They tried to say that my nephew walked there. As a medical profession, Lorenzo had enough fentanyl to kill twelve to thirteen people. That's a slap in the face for a Fayetteville Police Department, for someone to, to tell me that. Morphine fentanyl is a hundred times potent.
Guys, I, I have to buy about a three-minute.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, the problem that we are having is why is it so hard for them to investigate when it, cases, especially when it comes to minorities? Why? Why we get treated like trash?
Thank you all. And since the chief, Marius, I, I know that you, you all need to communicate with them and see if we can answer a question. All right. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Chilico Hurst.
Good evening, sir, Mr. Hurst.
Good evening. It's, it's kinda, it's an issue that was brought up, I see, by our former police chief, by an individual who presently sits on the city council. Now, the same individual I've spoken on before, he has a problem with women of color and speaking it to them disparagingly. It's funny how it was a little humorous when we brought it up. And the other, Ms. Kinston and the other young lady that was on the city council, when she was present and had video. But now you got the former chief bringing it up, now everybody wanna have a meeting. And then you have another individual who works for the city that the chief accused of making a sexist remark, and he, he's probably making eighty thousand dollars a year, taxpayer money. He still got his job. The second thing I want to talk about is for, I asked previously for the city to consider putting a rental moratorium on the rent. I asked for that because you have presently in this country, they call United States, five states that more or less have a freeze. So to force more or less landlords to accept a certain percentage of, um, them HUD vouchers. Citizens are losing their homes, and we all know the state of North Carolina still has a minimum wage under eight dollars. But you expect these citizens to be fruitful and diligent and provide for their families. What I'm asking, cuz I pulled this data up from the state of Maryland, is for the city council to reach out to officials in the state of Maryland and see whatever they have presented towards their councils, cuz it says right here in the data that I pulled up, the city council in various cities in the state of Maryland had the power. They didn't have to go to the general assembly, they didn't have to go to congressional route, a senate route, that they was able to go ahead and put this for, to put a penalty for those landlords who did not honor those HUD vouchers. So that's what I'm asking y'all to do. I want to speak on those two things. And lastly, I want to ask, since they changed the name of the military installation, I'm asking for, what's the next step? You gonna change the name of Bragg Boulevard to something else? So that's all, cuz it is also a racist name. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Hurst.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Pamela Carter.
Good evening, Ms. Carter.
Uh, good evening, I'm here tonight, I live in District Two as well. Thank you, Shaquilla, for all you've done. Uh, I'm here tonight to respectfully request that the city council gives a resounding no to any special permit needed by the county to build a homeless shelter in the B Street neighborhood or support center, whatever they're calling it. The neighborhood residents and surrounding business owners were not notified concerning this project beforehand. My understanding is there wasn't a vote by the majority of the Cumberland County citizens either. This is a multimillion-dollar special project of one of the county commissioners, a personal dream of hers that she wants to see fulfilled. But this is public land and public money that will be used. And the very people that will be most affected by this project should have had a voice, and we should have had a place at the decision-making table. The neighborhood residents, the surrounding business owners, all of the downtown stakeholders, all of the city council, uh, most definitely the citizens of Cumberland County, we all should have been included. Our voices matter, and for the B Street residents, this is our home. We have Habitat homeowners that were told if they invested in the neighborhood, it was gonna be revitalized. It was gonna be better, safer, a good investment. We've got families, we have children. Recently, we had a carjacking, a rapid-fire shooting murder, and another shooting murder within days of each other. I was at home on Link Street by myself, enjoying a peaceful evening, and the rapid gunfire started. My first thought was war had broke out in the neighborhood. It was awful. The two people that were murdered were related to a longtime B Street resident, an elderly grandmother. We have decades-long issues. And I know I only have three minutes, so I'm not gonna just regurgitate, I think most of y'all know kinda what goes on just a couple of blocks from where we're standing. This is a struggling neighborhood. Why build a place for at-risk, unstable, scared folks, the homeless? Why build it in an at-risk, poverty-stricken, unstable, decades-long, crime-plegged, scary neighborhood? Why B Street? Land acquisition is very hard on land that should be used as green space. It has beautiful terraced, uh, terraced land going down to Blunts Creek or Cross Creek with beautiful trees and water features and wildlife. This land should be beautified. If the land must be sold, shouldn't it be up for public bid? As a taxpayer, and I'm sure most of the people in Cumberland County would want the most money that could be generated as possible for this valuable land just a couple of blocks from here, right here where the new thing that's coming, oh, that they're gonna build. The county commissioner said a big no to building an indoor aquatic center in the city's limits for our kids, but they're moving full steam ahead to build in this support center. No, not in our residential neighborhood.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you all.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Royal Viana. Ms. Royal Viana? Not present? Our last speaker is Ms. Rudlin Brown.
Good evening, Ms. Brown.
Good evening. Well, my name is Rudlin Brown, and I'm homeless. I've been homeless for off and on for a year. I have a two-year-old son, and I was trying to get resources such as housing. And I almost lost my son due to CPS, due to lack of help. Like somebody else said, there's two different types of homelessness. There's homelessness that people choose to be homeless and that want the help. And there's a different type of homeless that people want the help and don't get it. They get discriminated against. I am currently seven months pregnant and almost eight months pregnant, and I have not got any resources such as housing. And I think there should be more, um, resources for single mothers that, such as myself. And there's more, um, help for men than it is single mothers. And I think that should change. And I think that should change. People are getting funded throughout these organizations, and they're not doing right by their money, such as their resource center, Salvation Army, and I can go on, the list goes on. But I feel like there should be a change within the community, and it should be like more help for us instead of us getting put down and run off, ran off of certain areas, like getting arrested and getting banned from certain areas instead of getting help. I think that should change.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
We have no further speakers, Mayor.
All right. So with that, we'll close the public forum and move to item 9.01, SVP evidentiary hearings. We now are preparing to moving to hearings that require the city council to hear sworn testimony. This is an evidentiary hearing. The city council's decision must be based on competent material and substantial evidence presented in, ma'am?
Okay. Just for deliberations.
Okay. So this is the continuation one?
Yes, sir.
All right. So we don't have to restate the policy?
You don't have to do any of that.
All right. So it's just voting?
That's right. Deliberations if council has any other questions.
So, thank you, ma'am. So Councilor Wood, I do remember this item for the Roadkill Road, this proposed school, and I know that there were some questions that came up before about the distance from another school. Since then, we did learn that, you know, some of those questions have been answered. I think the Trinity is maybe three-quarters of a mile up from where the proposed site for this is. And so with that, I'm trying to recall the night that we had the evidentiary hearing. I don't think there was, it was just a couple of questions about the recognition of the other school and operation hours, but I don't, I don't recall there being any, any other questions. Do you all recall why this particular item was paused or what we were waiting on? Councilmember Benevente, did you?
I had questions about sufficiency of evidence, so I'm hoping today that the city staff, who we directed to go and collect more evidence, can present that now.
What, what was the evidence that were requested, Mr. Hewitt?
If I may, Mayor Koven. So the staff is not allowed to bring forth more evidence. The evidentiary hearing is closed. Staff is permitted to bring back additional administrative information. That information is in the agenda packet.
Gotcha.
And so at this point, it's with council. I did send the link for the evidentiary hearing, and so it's again with council to evaluate the evidence that was presented during the hearing against the standards, and there were no other witnesses or anyone to provide testimony contrary to the applicants. And so what you have in the hearing is what you are considering.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Councilmember May? Okay.
If I, if I can continue to understand, the question that I had, that I referred back to staff, was to give us the impact of the additional school that was in the area. Are you saying that there's something in our packet that already includes that information?
Well, staff can't speak to impact, but there is additional information. Development Services staff is here, and they can answer the question as to what additional information they brought back.
That'd be great.
All right. Count, uh, thank you, Councilmember Benevente. Councilmember Harry, you had a question?
Well, the guy's coming. Are they coming?
And Councilmember Benevente, I'm sorry, I was trying to
Yes, sir. I understand.
Catch up on this. What was the evidence you were asking of staff?
He's about to present it.
Mr. Harmon, how are you?
We included was information from DOT on road widening projects and just a note of some evidence that was included originally in the packet that may have been overlooked as far as when that went to TRC and the comments of both our traffic services and the, and the NC DOT's traffic services at that point.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Harry, you had a question?
Well, I thought that I had brought up at the last meeting if, if there was a DOT turning lane. I thought I mentioned that. If I didn't, then we can exclude that. Well, was that a part of the DOT founding, Mr. Harmon, that you were talking of, sir?
In your report, as one of your attachments, there's a copy of the improvements for DOT.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. That was all.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Dawkins, do you have a question?
Ready to make a motion, Mr. Mayor. I move that, I move to approve the special use permit to allow the operation of a school in a single-family six residential zoning district subject to the conditions identified in a submitted site plan. Madam interim attorney, do I need to read the rest of that? I know I have to mention that the six findings below have been met.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim, yes, please, state all six standards.
All right. The special use complies with all applicable standards in Section 30-4. The special use will be in harmony with the area in which it is located. The special use will not materially endanger the public health or safety. If located, we're proposed and developed according to the plan that's submitted and approved. Special use is in general conformity with the city's adopted land use plans and policies. The special use will not substantially injure the value of the abutting land, or the special use is a public necessity. The special use complies with all other relevant city, state, and federal laws and regulations. That's my motion, Mr. Mayor.
All right. There's a motion by, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Dawkins. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Second by Councilmember Harry. All right. Discussion on the motion. All right. Councilmember Benevente.
So I haven't heard any evidence to accompany any of those six declarations. You sort of, right now, we're just saying that they've been met without really referencing any evidence at all. So I'm not exactly sure how we can say that the evidence has been met just simply by declaring it has, if we're not referencing any actual evidence that's been presented. You just, you're just, you're just saying that they did it. You're not saying how.
Well, we had the hearing, and so both sides were able to present their evidence, and
But one of them's got to present sufficient evidence, and I haven't heard anyone declare what that evidence is.
Well, that's what, that's what the council's voting on, whether you deem that it was sufficient or insufficient. You vote accordingly.
And so no one's going to say what that is?
Well, well, I don't think we can, we can go back to that since the hearing is closed. Hold on, one second. Madam Ingram, no, one second. So tonight, we've heard the hearing. If we look at this as a trial, we've heard the hearing. We've closed the testimony about it. You had staff that brought in some of the additional information, and so now it's time for the jury to make a decision. Councilmember Ingram, you had something?
So as I recall, when we are approving, maybe even are disapproving, but more so when we are, when we are approving, we would essentially say, we approve such and such fact based on the evidence presented and such. From my understanding, we have not necessarily ever laid into what finite fact we've always laid into based on the evident, that evidence that was presented in the presentation. From my understanding, based off of how I was guided as for the evidentiary hearing.
And that's a very low bar. And I think that we had learned since then that the bar is a little bit higher than simply
Councilmember, Councilmember Benevente? You have to be recognized, sir.
City attorney, because that is the direction that I, I received that guided us for that.
Correct. So my understanding is that we have these findings that we have to take in consideration. We listen to the testimony, and we make a decision based on that. Whatever your, your guidance is for that, I don't think it's up to the council to present and litigate the case, one way or another, to, to make the case whether it is, it is, I believe in it because of, I don't recall those, I agree with her, I don't recall naming specific items that pointed to it. But it's certainly open to debate and your vote. So we do have a motion on the floor. This is the discussion phase. Councilmember Hondros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I recall, when this was being presented to us last meeting, and I believe Councilman Benevente was via Zoom, attending via Zoom, the question was about traffic and/or traffic safety. The applicant, and I don't, I thought I saw him, but I don't see him, mentioned that he had done the study or the, the intended or, or what they thought the, the impact studies, the impact was going to be on traffic based on industry standard best practice. You know, I guess for me, the question is, at what point is, or to what extent is the developer responsible for traffic? If it's a NC DOT-maintained road, it's up to them to maintain the road and make it safer if it's deemed not safe. If it's a city-maintained road, then it's, that's our responsibility. I don't think that's the, that's the developer's responsibility. During the presentation, specific on that, he referred to the, the stacking lane within the property of the, there's the applicant, within the property of the applicant where, and this may be a question for Mr. Crawford, the, the, and I don't know if he can speak today, but the, whatever the average was, the, their design was, it exceeded that. It was like one and a half times what NC DOT recommended, which is why NC DOT approved it. So for whatever that's worth, I mean, I just don't think it's the developer's responsibility to, for road safety.
All right. Thank you. Attorney, you had something?
Yes, Mayor Koven. I would like to advise the council that it is best practice to name at least one fact for each finding. It is styled that way in staff's PowerPoint presentation. For council's reference, the application is in the agenda packet, and there are facts in the application that you can use to go with each standard.
All right. So now, as you look at the executive summary, it says, during the evidentiary hearing, the burden of demonstrating that an applicant complies with the applicable review and approval standards of its ordinance is on the applicant, which shall be demonstrated by competent material, substantial evidence. The burden is not on the city, or the parties to show the standards have not been met. So at what point, but you're saying it is attached. Basically, what you're going by, the only sworn official testimony we had that we received is attached to this that speak to the recommended approval of this particular item. Is that what you're saying? So you want that read as a part of it?
Council doesn't, you know, have to find the facts, although you can during the hearing, but the application is a part of the evidence.
Right.
So you can reference the application. The standards are there with some facts for each standard. If council finds those standards have been met.
Yeah, I don't, I'm, I'm not saying it can't be done. I just don't remember that ever being a burden that, that had to be met. I know you had to restate them, and then I know that this constantly changes as we get guidance and the changes that statute had. But again, to that point, if you look at the executive summary, your last line said it was not up to, to the council to approve or disapprove. But however you like to do it, Mayor Pro Tim, it's a motion on the floor you made. It was seconded. We've had discussion. If there are no further discussions, look to your point. Second round, the last round, council member?
Oh, yeah. I just wanted to make sure that everyone was looking at the PowerPoint that they provided us, and it literally says, insert supporting facts. So if we're incapable of inserting a supporting fact, then we, there must not be sufficient evidence. If there's sufficient evidence, you can give me something for at least some of these. In fact, you're supposed to have it for all of these. But the fact that we can't, to me, says that we, as a council, don't take this bar very seriously.
Well, counsel, I think, council member, I think that's a stretch, that your interpretation of the case, and so was ours, one, the professional staff, TRC, integral, interacted with NC DOT and all the relevant parties that we're asking for information for, and then still came out of that process with an approval. So whatever burden approves you, you use, but I, I don't think you can paint us with a broad brush saying it doesn't matter about standards. So, Councilmember Ingram, real quick, and then council will, will bring this to, to a vote.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Madam Attorney, based off of your understanding, and I just want, I'm just going to read one of the facts, just so I can, I can make sure that I understood what you were saying correctly. So if I was to use number six, the special use complies with all relevant city, state, federal laws and regulations. The applicant states that the site will be designed and constructed in general compliance with the city's UDO, NC Department of Environmental and Quality, NC Building Code, and other relevant regulations. I would then add, as presented.
That would be all. And I know it's long, counsel, but
No, 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 no. So that, that's what I was, that's what I was saying. I thought he just read that. He, so, okay, what you're looking for is for them to read all the, and that's, that's what I thought we all knew. So, okay, he has it now. No, he has it.
Counsel, we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim. It's properly seconded. We've had discussion. Mayor Pro Tim, if you are looking to add to this discussion by reading additional, all right, so, question? Councilmember Hondros, second round, final round? Yes, sir.
Friend, no, this is just a friendly amendment. Would you be willing to add that to your motion? Just read what she just read. Add it to the motion.
I'd like her to read it. She's much better reader than I am.
Councilwoman Ingram, would you be willing to read it so he can add it to his motion?
All right. Counselors, stay focused and not overcomplicate this. Madam Ingram, do you choose to read this, this paragraph as a part of the official record, even though it's printed in our publicly printed document?
All six?
Yes, ma'am. If you choose to do it.
Sure. And this is to approve? Okay. The special use permit must meet the following. Okay. Number one, the special use permit complies with all applicable standards of Section 34C, use-specific standards. According to Section 34C 3B, educational facilities, one separation, except in the DT 1 or DT 2 downtown districts, all educational facilities, except colleges and vocational or trade schools, shall be located at least
Councilmembers, you all asked for this to be read, now we can. Well, well, but you, you're talking and you can't hear, talk and listen, so, so please keep reading, ma'am.
Okay. Shall be located at least 500 linear feet from any following uses. A, adult entertainment. B, bar club nightclub, bar nightclub and cocktail use. Two, schools, elementary, middle, high. A, any temporary structures needed for the expansion of an elementary, middle, or high school located within SF 15, SF 10, S or SF 6 districts, and on a site or parcel with an area of 20 acres or less, shall, one, not be located with the principal building and any abutting right-of-way unless there is no other practical alternative due to topography, the presence of utilities or easements, the existence of undistributed open space and buffers, or other site features beyond the landowner's control. And two, have the base of structure screened from the view from abutting properties and public streets. B, in the DT, DT 1, DT 2 downtown districts, the city manager must approve a parking plan and designated drop-off and pickup area based, based the maximum capacity of the facility as licensed by the state, mitigates traffic congestion, and minimizes and avoids the need for children to cross, to cross vehi- vehicular travel ways to enter or exit the school. Two, the special use will be in harmony with the, with the, in which of the located, for the according applicant, applicant. The proposed educational use is compatible to the area, neighborhood that currently contains a school and other non-residential oriented uses, such as houses of worship. The proposed 8,120 square feet building, school building will be set back from the street over 300. The parking lot will be set back approximately 50. Therefore, the development shall not create an intrusive use or generate any more noise or vehicle traffic that is not already typical to the surrounding uses. Construction shall be in general compliance with the city's UDO standards, including parking, landscape, site access, et cetera. parking, landscape, site access, et cetera. Three, the special use permit, special use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located, where proposed and developed according to the plan as submitted and approved. The applicant states the educational, education development shall comply with the pertinent regulations of the city and state as related to public health and safety. The development would not generate any toxic fumes. The site contains significant internal vehicle stacking for student drop-off. Therefore, parking of the backup of vehicles on Rose Hill Road is not anticipated. Four, the special use perm, the special use is generally conform, conformity with the city's adopted, adopted land use plans, policies according to the applicant. The UDO allows education facilities in single-family SF 6 zoning district as a special use. The area currently contains an education facility. Therefore, the development is compatible with the city's land use and policies. Five, the special use will not substantially injure the value of the abutting land or special use of public necessity. And according to the application, the proposed fence allows for the protection of the property values and the ability of neighboring lands to develop the uses permitted in the zoning district as it will be located behind an existing fence. These security fences actually discourage criminal activity in the area, making it a community enhancing crime-reducing system. Furthermore, they reduce constraints upon police force, allowing them to focus on other areas. Six, the special use complies with all relevant city, state and federal laws and regulations. The applicant states that the site will be designed and constructed in general compliance with the city's UDO, North Carolina Department of Environmental and Quality, NC Building Code and other relevant regulations.
All right, counsel, I'll look to for your votes. Thank you, Councilmember Ingram. All right, madam, who's, who's missing? Okay, all right, Madam Clerk, the motion carries nine, one. Good job, counsel. Good history lesson, our English lit lesson. All right. So item 9.02, added item, council member here for reconsideration or?
We're missing somebody?
It was, it was nine. Councilmember Jensen voted last.
Okay.
Yeah, so who's missing? One, two, four. Doug keeps voting. This is...
No, it's only showing nine votes.
Yeah, who are we missing?
It's not me.
Contras is there, I'm there.
It's Brenda, it's Brenda.
Ms. McNair. All right, what's your vote? Show of hands. Those approve, those in favor of the motion? All right. Madam Clerk, you got it? Those opposed? Counsel, Councilmember Benevente, nine, one. All right, moving to 9.02.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, counsel. This particular item tonight is no different than any, somewhat no different than any item that sometime gets on our demo list. I think, and this particular item that I'm told now is 5002 Collins Street within the Bonny Doon community, came on our demo list in 2022. For some reasons, and here are, and here we are entering 2024, that this item did not, has not been demoed yet. Within that period of time, regardless if the, the property owner has done things correct or not, and sometimes property owners don't get it right, they started doing repairs to the property. And I think there was some conversation going back and forth between the property owners and the city staff, if I'm not mistaken. But round about the middle of September, I received a call and I drove to the Bonny Doon area and I began to talk to several people, not, like I said, I'm not 100% sure of the four property owners. I don't think that's really a, that's something that staff could find out. And they began to tell me, well, the house hasn't been demoed, they had started doing repairs. Within that time period that they gave that information to me in September, I sent everything that I had to my council members and to our city attorney and city manager at the time, to include a face picture of the letter and the improvements that the property owners have done. My ask tonight is an ask not for me, but it is an ask for the citizens that we represent, except I represent this group of citizens directly, these citizens of all of ours that are sitting up, that are up here tonight. I'm asking tonight, with whatever conditions that comes out of this discussion, that we remove 5002 Collins Street from the demo list with whichever deemed conditions that may arise tonight, that we allow the property owner to continue to improve this structure, to take this structure out of blight and to take this structure into an improved state where it can be a asset of housing within the Bonny Doon community. As I, as I finish my statement in supporting this, this property and this family, one of our number one things that we talk about in the city, and we have Dr. Newton here tonight, if we need to speak with him, we are about improving our blighted community into a more improved housing. And I make a motion tonight that we take 5002 Collins Street off of the demo list for whatever kind of conditions that may arise from this discussion.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. So I know you made a motion and I see it seconded by, by counsel, by Mayor Pro Tim Dawkins, but council, council member here asks for consideration, you know, certainly we want to create a path to revitalization for some of these, these communities like, like Bonny Doon where this is. How would you be inclined to allow in the city attorney's office to work with the property owner to put them on a specific timeline? Since this has been existing for a while, since 2022, and they just ramped up the work recently, what do you, what's your thoughts on putting them on a, some type of consent agreement voluntarily as a condition to have a date in which they plan to complete? Just so we don't have a, do something, stop, start the process over?
Yeah, and I, I agree with that. That's something that can be worked out between our staff, our legal team for this particular property. And it also may be just that we look to making sure that something, if this arises again, and it will, because we, we have these type of cases, how that we can make sure that we keep these things moving forward and how can, we can improve the area. So yes, sir, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Mr. Hewitt, you had a comment?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council member here as well. One of the things that the staff really tries to do is whenever possible, we want to use our community development funds for demolition, so that we are not necessarily tying up the land by putting a lien on it. And one of the reasons that it was delayed from 2002 to 2003 is that we ran out of money in our POPS. And when we had money additionally through CDBG, we applied that toward being able to take this house down. We had an active contract for demolition and the contractor went out last week and had conversations with the property owner and that did not go very well. And so we may be in the market to try to find someone else to do the demolition, depending on whatever council decides here. I do know that there is some additional information that came up and just as a nod, is there a current assessment on the property as well? Dr. Newton, do you know? And, okay. And so one of the things that if the council is so inclined, we would want to, to do as the mayor said, to put together an agreement. The thing that we are most desirous to not do is to give false hope to the property owner, depending on the condition of the house. There was not a permit pulled on the house from 2018 to 2023. The permit, I think, valued was $500? Dr. Newton? It just, yes. Yes, I'm sorry, sir. I'm sorry.
Everything that you were saying is correct up until the point of the, the permit value. That was the purchase price of the property. It was quitclaim deed for $500 to the current owners.
Okay.
And the assessment is $1,000, has been unpaid for more than two years.
Okay, and so we're more than happy to take any direction we want from council, given the fact that the demolition contract that we had, because of the interactions last week, backed out. I think that we, if the council is so inclined, we definitely could do something. But there's a difference in delaying the demolition order and rescinding the demolition order. And so if you would like to, when the intervening two-week period between now and the 28th to do something, but my real fear, and this is why I prompted and shared it with Councilmember here as well, and we actually contacted the owner when we found out that they had, came in to pull a permit, is that we don't want to be here where they have spent thousands of dollars and the house is still not up to code. And they've made, spent hundreds or thousands of dollars in time with it, but we, we're here to serve in the direction of council.
Well, that's why I was proposing that there be a consent based on a conversation that takes place between Development Services, who's able to, to gauge what it takes to bring the house to a functionable order and where they are currently, and, and get them to agree to the timeline. And maybe it's a stay versus a rescinding of the order, Madam Attorney, but you got a lot more legal knowledge than I do.
We can do that, Mayor Covin.
Yeah, so would you consider? All right, so council, Councilmember Mahndros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When this, we received these emails from Mr. Harris and others. I asked for permits, we asked for inspections, none of that, apparently, there was no permit pulled, no inspections done. My frustration is we're yo-yoing staff. Just last month, we were talking about speeding up code enforcement and making these things happen instead of a three-year period and a year and a half or six months, or however fast we want to do it. And then, once we get to the point in which we're telling them to hurry up and then we're telling them to stop. We can't, we gotta be consistent with it and if a resident or residents are not, property owners are not doing things the right way with permits and inspections, how do we know that, that it's even safe? The other, the other piece to that is having rentals that are safe for people to, to live in. So that's the conundrum that I'm in and don't know if I can support this. Thank you.
Well, and Councilmember Mahndros, certainly, you know, I think you have two things. One, staff did his job with getting this to the point of where we were able to vote and issue an order of demolition. But two, this, this part of it doesn't really involve pulling the staff back from their job because they've already brought it to the council. This would be just staying the actual completion of that if the terms are met, which could be all valid inspections up to date and a, and a complete voluntary assessment of code enforcement to make sure all proper permits pulled or whatever terms you all need to come with to, to be compliant. So if there's truly a desire for them to comply and to get back in compliance, I mean, I think this just creates an avenue. And if they don't do it, then it picks the process back up where it left it.
If I can. And thank you, Mayor. And that's all the request is. Maybe I spoke hastily and sent to rescind. But to get, but to give this property owner opportunity, once again, to try to bring this property from blight to where we have a desire in all of our communities across the city. So I, I move a question and for vote, Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Mahndros, you had another?
What's the motion?
Motion was to authorize legal and Development Services to engage the property owner to enter into a consent agreement, which I'm sure would be a condition for staying the demolition, or it would stay based on this being completed and give a specific timeline.
Delay or stay?
Stay. Same, same difference.
Are we delaying it or are we canceling it?
Well, you stay in the sentence, that means you're pushing the pause on, Madam Attorney, you know, my legal degree is in the mail, so tell them, counsel.
We would style the agreement such that there were particular milestones and if those milestones were not met within a certain time period, then council, it wouldn't require additional action. We could continue with the demolition.
And how quick could you bring something like that back between working with Mr. Newton? You know, make sure all permits are pulled and those kind of things?
Considering we have to work with the property owner, I'd be hesitant to give a timeframe, but council could authorize us to draft something and execute it or if you want it to come back, however you like it.
All right, so counsel, that's the question before. It's Councilmember McNair.
I just wanted to know, how would you determine, how would you determine the timeframe that they may need to bring the property up to code?
Well, with agreements, we try to come to an agreement, you know, working with the property owner, considering what they say they need and then with our professional staff, using those two as kind of the gauge for a timeframe, unless council wants to set the timeframe.
That'd be tough for council to do.
I think it best as she just stated.
All right, Councilmember Mahndros, second round.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hate to belabor the point, but to Councilman Harris' point, I think we all want to save blighted properties. Lord knows we need the housing and I'm all for that. So I'm not against saving it and, and trying to get it up to, up to code. When these repairs and stuff are done and they're not up to code, the property, most of the time, reverts back to a blighted property. That, that's my, that's my issue. So I would be willing, sir, if you're willing to do a friendly amendment, to have staff and the owners, or legal and the owners work out an agreement in 30 days that gives the property owner six months, 12 months, whatever they think they need to meet certain milestones and ultimately get it up to code, I, I could support that. But if it's just open-ended, I can't support that.
If I, I, I'm not going to, the reason I'm not going to support that, because we've had items that we've dealt with and we were talking about loans and, and things, I can't remember the exactly subject matter and it takes longer, it may take longer than what we think. I think our city interim man, attorney just stated that this would take, give an opportunity for her team and our boots-on-the-ground team to get together with the owners and work that out and then allow them to share that information back with us instead of us trying to set it open and close here, because we can't do that, not being fair.
All right, Mr. Hewitt, you had something to add to this?
Yes, sir. Again, we will, my recommendation too is that we do everything that you, council said is best to vote and that we bring you back something, even if it's just a staff report at the meeting later this month. There is work that has been done on the house in years past that was not permitted. And in trying to bring things up to code, let me say it a little bit stronger. My fear is that they are going to spend significant money and, but I'm not saying that that's good, I'm not saying that's bad. I just don't want us to leave here thinking that, or the owners to think that... owners to think, that they can do this easily, particularly since they're doing it as an owner occupied, um, which, which is perfectly fine. So if you would allow, depending on the vote, I would respect for your request that we come back to you, um, with a staff report of some so- sort. Um, and then you'd be able to ratify this action at the next meeting, because we literally, there's a lot going on with the property. And, um, you can spend an awful lot of time and money fixing something up that will not pass inspection. Yes, sir.
I'm fine with that.
Yes, but, but again, but again, your action to do as the motion is on the floor is needed to prompt the city attorney and staff to also generate that report to come back to you at the later meeting this month.
Yes, sir.
Are you good?
Councilmember Jensen?
So what I guess, um, after listening to the city manager, I'm gonna change what I was getting ready to say. So should it be my point to ask for a friendly amendment to include what the city manager said to councilmember here?
Oh, I, yes, I was accepting that. I was saying yes.
Okay, okay.
And the city attorney.
Then I'm done.
All right. So let's just repeat this. It's a motion by councilmember Harris, seconded by Mayor Protem, uh, to stay this, to allow staff to reach out to the owner and to come back by the next meeting with the assessment as to where we are with, with this project. Okay? Everybody clear?
Sounds good, Mayor. Yes.
All right. Let's, let's vote. Yeah, I think one is excused. Uh, someone still didn't vote.
But that's, and that's also, that's also, uh, uh...
All right. What, what's your vote, councilmember McNair?
Because she didn't get an excuse.
Uh, all right. Motion carries. All right.
Motion adjourned.
So move to adjourn. Thank you, counsel.